Town Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting February 10th, 2022, call to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinzinger?
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Here.
Mayor Pagura?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thanks ma'am. I'd like to welcome down Pastor Kendra Hopson from St. Luke Ebony Christian Church for our invocation. Welcome ma'am.
Father God, we thank you for every good and perfect gift. We come in the humblest manner that we know how, thanking you. Lord, I thank you for every city council member that is here, the mayor, the vice mayor, every person that is present. Lord, I lift up every plan, everything that will be explained and everything that will be discussed in this meeting to you. Lord, let your wisdom just flow freely. That way, the decisions that you want to be made will be made, Father. We thank you. We ask blessings on each and every person, every council member's family, that they be healthy, they be whole, and that they be blessed in your name. Now unto him that is able to keep you from falling and to present you faultless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy. To the only wise God, our Savior, be glory and majesty, dominion and power both now and ever. Amen.
Ma'am, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am. We'll move on to item three, chamber commerce, new business. Ms. Katie Swan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council members. Thanks so much for having me in the chamber here again this month. I have two businesses to present to you this evening. The first business will be USA Real Estate with Stanley Pachuck.
Welcome sir.
My name is Stanley Pachuck. I'm in real estate. I started in 1967. People keep asking me, "Why are you still in real estate?" And I say, "Well, I guess I like getting beat up." I practiced in two countries, both Canada and Arizona. I moved to Arizona in 1978, had to start real estate all over again, had to find a school to go to to learn how to pass the state exam. I don't think Bill Gray, the instructor, thought I would ever pass, but somehow I did, got licensed, and went to work in Scottsdale. We developed Prescott Ridge, 2,400 acres gated community in the mid to late 90s. And when I say "we," I got two partners. There's three of us, but my job is sales, so they put a salesman's hat on me, shipped me up here, and said, "Don't come home till you're sold out." Well, I was a little slow. It took a while. Took about three years. Then I decided I do not want to go back to Scottsdale, and I stayed here, been here ever since, and still working. Thank you.
Thanks Stanley. Appreciate you. You've been a longstanding member of our community, and just recently you joined the chamber, so that's terrific.
I'm a little hard of hearing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just saying that you're a longstanding member, as you mentioned, of the community, and we welcome you here, and we appreciate what you've done, Prescott Valley.
Thank you very much. I'm only 84 years old, so I plan to be here for many, many more years.
Sounds good. Thanks Stanley.
Thank you.
Stanley, Stanley has a goal of being the fittest 100-year-old in Prescott Valley, so you guys watch out.
We did their ribbon cutting yesterday, and I gotta say, Stanley throws a really great party. Thank you Stanley.
Thank you.
All right, so our next business, I have Angela Johnson. She is the Sales Director for the Holiday Inn Express and the Hampton Inn. Next week, we'll actually be doing the Holiday Inn Express ribbon cutting, and then following that, we'll be doing our Live After Five at the Hampton Inn. So come on up Angela.
Thank you for this time to speak and introduce myself. I work for both the Holiday Inn Express as well as the Hampton Inn in Prescott. And the Hampton Inn is super excited to do our Live After Five next week because we have been a long member of the chamber. But more exciting, the Holiday Inn is going to cut their ribbon and join the chamber next week, so I want to invite everyone to please come out and join us. We have put major, major renovations into both properties, and we are excited to show all of our renovations to you guys. And I'm sorry, I'm not quite as exciting as my previous speaker, but that's what I've got.
Awesome ma'am. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you.
Angela, thanks for being a resident of Prescott Valley.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Item four, call to the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any persons wishing to address the council must complete a speaker card located inside the entrance of the council chambers and deliver it to the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. So this is for folks that are new to this, we used to do this at the end, but now we're doing it in the beginning, so this will be your only time to speak other than item, I believe, 8E tonight, so that'll be a public hearing as well. So here's your opportunity, and clerk, who do we have?
Kim Thompson.
Welcome.
My name is Kim Thompson. I'm here to ask a couple questions regarding item 8B, which is the final development plan approval for the Mingus West Phase Two. And my two questions relate to the fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved this with three stipulations or conditions, one of which I believe the developer is following along with, which means following their preliminary plan. The second item, or the second condition, was that there be a transportation impact analysis performed, and they asked specifically if there were going to be left turn lanes and right turn lanes, like, were added for Phase One. And at the time, it wasn't completed, and as somebody following along from printed items at home, I don't see where the answer to that question is yet in the stuff that's been published so far. So that's my first question. And then the other condition related to the water main, water line expansion, and another case where I don't see that addressed in the stuff that's been published so far. So those are my two questions regarding things the planning and zoning said had to be done before final approval, and now it's coming up for final, and that stuff's not published that I, from home, can find. So those are my two. Awesome ma'am. And as I mentioned, council, we won't be responding back to your questions, but we will have staff, they've heard your questions, and we'll have them answer those questions. Right, and I would like to thank Mr. Gonzalez, who's met with me already, but some of the stuff just had to be answered by the developer, so I thought I'd get it out here.
Sure. So we'll make sure that is passed along, and hopefully notes were taken out there by staff, and I believe Mr. Davis is out there as well, and hopefully be able to address that at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Hemer?
Welcome. My name's Sandy Hemer. I represent the state of Arizona. There's an issue that we have been trying to stay in contact with Prescott Valley about regarding something called the Randolph Shepherd Act, allowing... Randolph Shepherd Act, sorry. So the Randolph Shepherd Act puts visually impaired and blind individuals to work. There is a state statute that mirrors the Randolph Shepherd Act, and it gives the blind and visually impaired individuals first rights to refusal in government buildings for concessions. It is a law that was brought into the 30s. That was about when you'd see blind people selling sticks of gum, newspapers, things like that, and it has expanded since then. So we are expanding, more or less, is the way to put it. So we're growing. We have a lot more blind people in our program. It's actually through the Department of Economic Rehabilitative Services that we do this. So these people go through the VR program, and after the VR program, they get to choose, you know, where they work. We are one of those options for them, provided they learn the skills that they need to, to be able to run their own business. So they do own their own business. They get an LLC. We kind of watch over them. We're the state licensing agency that licenses them, as long as they also pass R-Trade. So we have been in contact with Prescott Valley about this because we are expanding. Like I said, I have an operator that can and is willing to operate in the Yavapai County area. We brought this up a couple years ago to Prescott Valley. We've been kind of in talks back and forth, and we were told when we were asking for them to sign the grantor agreement for us to be able to start, that we would be on the agenda for the council meeting for November. And then it didn't work. And then it didn't work. And so here we are today, because we were told that we were going to be on the agenda today. And when I checked the agenda a week ago, I noticed we are not on the agenda, so I would like to ask if we can please be on the agenda for next meeting.
Is that everything ma'am?
We do have an appointment with Ryan Judy to have a call to meet about it, again, asking more questions that we did answer previously, so we are still in talks. I just want it to be on meeting minutes that we are making this request, please.
Okay, great ma'am. And Mr. Judy, I'm sure has your information and your contact information, and I'm sure he'll be reaching out and be able to answer additional questions that you may have.
I appreciate it.
Thank you ma'am. Clerk?
No one else.
I believe there's someone out in the audience, I believe wishes to come out. Jose?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council members. Thanks so much for having the Chamber here again this month. I have two businesses to present to you this evening. The first business will be USA Real Estate with Stanley Pachuck.
Welcome, sir.
Here?
Yes, sir.
My name is Stanley Pachuck. I'm in real estate. I started in 1967. People keep asking me, "Why are you still in real estate?" And I say, "Well, I guess I like getting beat up." I practiced in two countries, both Canada and Arizona. I moved to Arizona in 1978. Had to start real estate all over again. Had to find a school to go to to learn how to pass the state exam. I don't think Bill Gray, the instructor, thought I would ever pass, but somehow I did. Got licensed and went to work in Scottsdale. We developed Prescott Ridge, 2,400 acres gated community in the mid to late 90s. And when I say "we," I got two partners. There's three of us. But my job is sales, so they put a salesman's hat on me, shipped me up here, and said, "Don't come home till you're sold out." Well, I was a little slow. It took a while. Took about three years. Then I decided I do not want to go back to Scottsdale. And I stayed here, been here ever since, and still working. Thank you.
Thanks, Stanley. Appreciate you. You've been a longstanding member of our community, and just recently you joined the Chamber, so that's terrific.
I'm a little hard of hearing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just saying that you're a longstanding member, as you mentioned, of the community, and we welcome you here, and we appreciate what you've done, Prescott Valley.
Thank you very much. I'm only 84 years old, so I plan to be here for many, many more years.
Sounds good. Thanks, Stanley.
Thank you.
Stanley. Stanley has a goal of being the fittest 100-year-old in Prescott Valley, so you guys watch out.
We did their ribbon cutting yesterday, and I gotta say, Stanley throws a really great party. Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you.
All right, so our next business, I have Angela Johnson. She is the Sales Director for the Holiday Inn Express and the Hampton Inn. Next week, we'll actually be doing the Holiday Inn Express ribbon cutting, and then following that, we'll be doing our Live After Five at the Hampton Inn. So come on up, Angela.
Thank you for this time to speak and introduce myself. I work for both the Holiday Inn Express as well as the Hampton Inn in Prescott. And the Hampton Inn is super excited to do our Live After Five next week because we have been a long member of the Chamber. But more exciting, the Holiday Inn is going to cut their ribbon and join the Chamber next week. So I want to invite everyone to please come out and join us. We have put major, major renovations into both properties, and we are excited to show all of our renovations to you guys. And I'm sorry, I'm not quite as exciting as my previous speaker, but that's what I've got.
Awesome, ma'am. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Angela, thanks for being a resident of Prescott Valley.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Item four, Call of the Public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any persons wishing to address the council must complete a speaker card located inside the entrance of the council chambers and deliver it to the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. So this is, for folks that are new to this, we used to do this at the end, but now we're doing it in the beginning, so this will be your only time to speak other than item, I believe, 8E tonight. So that'll be a public hearing as well. So here's your opportunity, and clerk, who do we have?
Kim Thompson.
Welcome.
My name is Kim Thompson. I'm here to ask a couple questions regarding item 8B, which is the final development plan approval for the Mingus West Phase Two. And my two questions relate to the fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved this with three stipulations or conditions, one of which I believe the developer is following along with, which means following their preliminary plan. The second item, or the second condition, was that there be a transportation impact analysis performed, and they asked specifically if there were going to be left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes, like, were added for Phase One. And at the time, it wasn't completed, and as somebody following along from printed items at home, I don't see where the answer to that question is yet in the stuff that's been published so far. So that's my first question. And then the other condition related to the water main, water line expansion, and another case where I don't see that addressed in the stuff that's been published so far. So those are my two questions regarding things the Planning and Zoning said had to be done before final approval, and now it's coming up for final, and that stuff's not published that I, from home, can find. So those are my two.
Awesome, ma'am. And as I mentioned, council, we won't be responding back to your questions, but we will have staff, they've heard your questions, and we'll have them answer those questions.
Right, and I would like to thank Mr. Gonzalez, who's met with me already, but some of the stuff just had to be answered by the developer, so I thought I'd get it out here.
Sure. So we'll make sure that is passed along, and hopefully notes were taken out there by staff, and I believe Mr. Davis is out there as well, and hopefully be able to address that at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk?
Sandy Heimer.
Welcome.
My name's Sandy Heimer. I represent the state of Arizona. There's an issue that we have been trying to stay in contact with Prescott Valley about regarding something called the Randolph Shepherd Act, allowing... Randolph Shepherd Act, sorry. So the Randolph Shepherd Act puts visually impaired and blind individuals to work. There is a state statute that mirrors the Randolph Shepherd Act, and it gives the blind and visually impaired individuals first rights to refusal in government buildings for concessions. It is a law that was brought into the '30s. That was about when you'd see blind people selling sticks of gum, newspapers, things like that, and it has expanded since then. So we are expanding, more or less, is the way to put it. So we're growing. We have a lot more blind people in our program. It's actually through the Department of Economic Rehabilitative Services that we do this. So these people go through the VR program, and after the VR program, they get to choose, you know, where they work. We are one of those options for them, provided they learn the skills that they need to, to be able to run their own business. So they do own their own business, they get an LLC. We kind of watch over them. We're the state licensing agency that licenses them, as long as they also pass R-Trade. So we have been in contact with Prescott Valley about this because we are expanding. Like I said, I have an operator that can and is willing to operate in the Yavapai County area. We brought this up a couple years ago to Prescott Valley. We've been kind of in talks back and forth, and we were told when we were asking for them to sign the grant agreement for us to be able to start, that we would be on the agenda for the council meeting for November. And then it didn't work. And then it didn't work. And so here we are today, because we were told that we were going to be on the agenda today. And when I checked the agenda a week ago, I noticed we are not on the agenda, so I would like to ask if we can please be on the agenda for next meeting.
Is that everything, ma'am?
We do have an appointment with Ryan Judy to have a call to meet about it, again, asking more questions that we did answer previously, so we are still in talks. I just want it to be on meeting minutes that we are making this request, please.
Okay, great, ma'am. And Mr. Judy, I'm sure has your information?
Yes.
And your contact information, and I'm sure he'll be reaching out and be able to answer additional questions that you may have.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Clerk?
No one else.
I believe there's someone out in the audience, I believe, wishes to come out. Jose? If there was going to be someone that didn't follow the directions of filling out a form, I knew it would be you, sir.
Hey, you know me. I don't follow procedure. I have four things. One thing that I want to discuss is the Hometown Hero Program that we discussed at the Elks Club not too long ago. I followed up, and instead of putting flags or lights on the flags out on 69, we have where we can put up banners, and the VFW wants to put up at least 10 with just five military branches on it, and then we can sell, and the city can sell banners to the public that want to put it to honor their father, their kids, or whatever, and put them up there. And that way, the city and the VFW will make a little bit of money putting these things up. And it won't, the flags with the lights on them, as we lose about 50 flags a year just putting them up 13 times a year, and we couldn't put them up any longer than that. But I have been following up on that, Mayor, as we discussed the other day at lunch. I think we need to formalize that we want to get one size. That way, it's all uniform throughout the city, and the veterans at the VFW really appreciate the support of this town.
We'll have Mr. Gonzalez follow up with you if that's good in regards. I know this is something that we've talked about in the past with the town, and we've actually modified our sign code in reference to this, so we'll have him follow up with you, sir.
All right. Now, on another unrelated issue, I have three things real quick. The intersection of Santa Fe Loop and Granville Fairway, it's been a problem to the people coming up what they call the island. And this, I have three, two widows and a divorcee young lady that drive small vehicles. And with Jasper hauling butt through there and people parking so close to the corner, nobody can see around. I got a pickup truck, and I got a picture from my pickup truck, and I can give to you all. You can't see around the corner with these cars and things coming up. If we could put a no parking sign there from here to the corner, put rocks up, something, if you put a no parking sign up, then the police can come by and make some revenue for the city. I mean, these people, they wait, they want to go hiking, want to go biking, but they won't park 50 feet down the thing so the residents can see out. That's issue one. Issue two, I know you can't do anything about, we talked about this three years ago, ADOT 69 in Prescott Valley. All I'm looking for is guidance to who I could call at ADOT to put some kind of metering system out there for a left-hand turn lane. Thank you so much.
Okay, Jose, you have one more. You can finish up.
And the last thing is what we talked about two years ago. Fifth Street going down to the VFW in the Fane Park, it's 22 feet till you get to where the old Fane Park sign is, and then it goes down to 17, 18 feet. And during cops and bobbers and the valley of the lights, it gets dangerous when we have Friday night dinners. So just something to look into, and let me know what I can do to help you all help us.
So does the clerk have your phone number? If we can get that, and either Mr. Davidson or Mr. Davis will be able to reach out to you in regards to contact information, speak to you about Glassford, and then we'll talk about the with the Fifth Street.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll after.
Sound good, so. Clerk, we're all done?
We're all done.
Moving on, item five, Council Communications. Councilman Kinzinger, you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just go over a few, just about two minutes' worth of information, what has been done out at CASA for the 21, 22 updates and renovations. And Fatima is going to be updating this for the very first part, from 21 to 22. Back up one there, Fatima, please. Renovations have been $375,000 done in this last year. Next slide, please. First of all, the covered entrance allows visitors to wait inside. So this is on, I believe, the east side of the building. A new foyer was installed so members and visitors can wait inside for their rides during inclement weather. This was not there before, so the addition was added on with the automatic doors. Next screen. Also, American Disability Act, accessible automatic doors, which I talked about, the entrance has now ADA accessible automatic doors for the comfort of the members and their visitors. Next. New walls and doors are allowed for the lease of the pavilion. I am the liaison, and Kendall and I are the liaisons between the town and CASA, and they talked about, they were wanting to lease the pavilion, which you're going to see that in a second here, but there was no bathrooms. So the bathroom is right, if you look through the picture on the left, you can see a door barely there. That door goes to the pavilion, so we, all we had to do is put up two walls and the doors that can lock it, so when the CASA wants to rent out this pavilion now, the people will still have access to the bathrooms, and this will also generate new, some new revenue for the center. Next one, Fatima. Also, a new coffee and tea bar, a new coffee and tea bar for the enjoyment of members and the visitors was done this last year. Next screen. Kitchen and equipment. Remodeled kitchen contains new stoves, a professional toaster oven, new mixers, and other equipment. Just alone, if I remember right off the top of my head, Josh, and you could maybe correct me, there's over $100,000 just in new equipment there in the kitchen. Am I correct on that? Thank you. So they, a lot of their appliances, stoves and everything were out of date, so this makes their preparing the food a lot easier, and refrigeration units they have now are more energy efficient. Next screen. Now, this is a picture of the new covered pavilion that allows outdoor activity and can be rented by other organizations to gain revenue. Looking at that, years ago, for some of the old timers, I guess at one time, town, the CASA building itself at one time was used by the town, so we still own that building. But there was a swimming pool behind there, so that swimming pool was filled up and a concrete pad was laid, poured there a number of years ago. Now, with the Jenkins Trust Fund, they put up the covered pavilion. There's two or three ceiling fans in there. It now makes a nice area for people to be able to rent for, let's, family gatherings, for organizations, whatever the case may be. Next one, Fatima. New roof upgrade and upgraded HVAC. First of all, the nice thing about the new roof is an insurance claim. So I guess every 20, 25 years, if we could have a tornado, not a tornado, a hailstorm come through, do destroy the roof, all we had to do on this, as the town, because we own it, only cost us $5,000, which was deductible for the new roof. And then the town has also been working in about, I don't know, Josh, what is it, five, six years, seven years, were they working, were they updating the HVACs? The last five years, they've been updating one or two HVACs each year. So this is, and so we got this year and one more, I think, and then everything will be updated on the HVACs. Next screen. They did paint the dining room this year, the activity area. The new paint brightens up and updates the dining room and activity. Bathrooms will be remodeled this year. CASA's going to do that themselves. But again, with a new, just even when you do your new facelift at home by painting your rooms, it's made the room, it just brightened it up, and there was a stage at the other end that was taken out, so it's just, it's a lot, it's just very more pleasing to the eye when you walk in. We want to thank the Jenkins family for their generous donations. We appreciate the Jenkins donations of $300,000 from Ray and Jeanne Jenkins family that made these much-needed improvements possible for our community senior citizens. Then, as I mentioned earlier, $40,000 came from the insurance company, so basically the other $35,000, town did a little bit of it, CASA has done some of it also, but it is, they have really updated it. Once these bathrooms get done, the whole building, there's not, and HVAC next year, I don't think there's nothing, this is kind of a turnkey for a while. If no one's had a chance to go out to CASA, to get there to CASA, you go out Spouse, and Spouse will, right at the end of Spouse, you can go down a steep hill, you don't want to do that, you turn a left on Manzanita, follow that around, that's where CASA is. You can go there for lunch. It's a, they, and you can also join, join is like 30 bucks a year as a member, so I would recommend people take advantage of joining and helping the CASA. They do serve the meals on wheels, they have quite a few meals that they deliver, I don't think I have the numbers here, every month, and then also you can go there and eat. So CASA has done well, and again, I want to thank Josh for ramrod in this, Josh, and keeping this under a timeline to get it done, and Mary and Betty are very happy with what you've done. So again, thank you very much. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Councilman?
They also have bingo, don't forget bingo. So Tuesdays and Saturdays, it's a great bingo with a large payout, so.
They're the largest.
Come out and play.
Councilman, Vice Mayor?
Good evening, everybody. First off, I want to thank Mary Lee Fowler, Kelly and Nikki Indikovich, Kelly Lee and Nikki Indikovich, who was kind of my team on Illegal Fentanyl Working Group. And then most recently, thank Commander Adelstein and the Prescott Valley Police Department, and Chief Martin, as well as Amory Ward, and Sheriff Rhodes, and Sheila Polk. Yesterday, we were at the Legislature for our bill 2021, and it passed 10-0, so we got 100% support, which is the farthest this bill's ever gone in five years. And so now we're off to a couple committees in the House, and then hopefully on the House floor, and then to the Senate and the Senate floor, and then to the Governor's desk. So I can't thank Sheila Polk enough because there was some opposition, and she just got right in and took care of it. So there needs to be some amendments to the bill, and the author, House Member Kwong is willing to make those amendments. So we're hoping it's going to sail through and get a signature by the Governor, which means we will have minimum sentencing for big drug dealers that deal drugs to our kids and have killed both our young residents and other residents in our community. So I'm really excited about that. And then I also want to say happy birthday to Arizona on February 14th, 110 years old. So that's really exciting. And then finally, there was a, I'm going to read this, it's very short. There was a post on Instagram, it says, "This story is of two officers who responded to a welfare check on an elderly female who's suffering from onset of dementia. She hadn't eaten in four days and had not drank any water. Then they then noticed that she had nothing in her cabinets upon contact with her family who's out of state. They were going to come out the following day. In the meantime, Officer McKinney's went to IHOP and got her the breakfast of her liking and black coffee, which is her fave. And then while the officer sat there and cut her food and fed her, Officer Woods, our other PV PD officer, cleaned her floors in her kitchen." And so it continues to say, "We're so proud of the amazing men and women of the Prescott Valley Police Department who go over and above the call of duty every day." So God bless our police officers.
Peple, please.
I just want to give a little reminder, or maybe you don't know. The third Tuesday of every month on Talk of the Town on KQNA, the radio station, is Prescott Valley Day. And that show used to belong to the mayor, and now it belongs to the Vice Mayor and myself. So at 4 o'clock, third Tuesday of the month, you can tune into 11:30 a.m., and we talk about, I'm usually, we're usually joined by the library, I'm Parks and Rec, to give us update on all the fun things, fun happenings that are going on and/or planned. And then we also just kind of talk about whatever else we feel like. So yeah, just, so this next, this upcoming Tuesday, I'll be on there, I'll be flying solo, but we'll manage. Thank you.
Councilman?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Another comment with reference to CASA. They also have a thrift store, and I've donated a number of things there, but yeah, that's a great thrift store for the public. And a couple of things here. I want to remind our viewers and residents about this Town of Prescott Valley Exterior Enhancement Grant Program. The program involves small businesses, and you apply online at pvaz.net. It started December 3rd, but the application deadline is April 29th. And this is just a reminder, if you're going to be involved in this, and are, would like to get a grant to improve your business, that again, the application has to be in by Friday, April 29th. Some of the eligibility criteria is to be a privately-held business located in the Town of Prescott Valley, provide a valid business license, have less than 50 employees, be an active and operational business, be in good legal standing, have no open code violations. And one of the criteria is to show that you had a reduction of revenue attributed to the pandemic. And it basically will enhance the outside of the business. I've been to several here in town, and in some instances, the business owners are renting the facility, but they hold the material that I give them to give to the owners of the building to see about having exterior painting done, any repair work done to the facade, and awnings and canopies, fascia fabricated signage. It's a wonderful opportunity for our businesses, and when you do go online, there is an application plan or form that you fill out, but there's also ideas as to what you can do to the front of your building. And I just think it's a wonderful opportunity, and we need to encourage all of our businesses that are eligible to participate in that. Also, in the paper yesterday, the local law enforcement will be hosting an event for K-9 units on March 26th. This will be held at the Finley Toyota Center from noon to 4:00 p.m. on March 26th. The three K-9 units are in great need of your support to provide their units with new training equipment and facility needs. They will have all the, their K-9s onsite. They will have small demos, and allow people to actually interact with belly rubs, kisses, pictures, and much more. And there will be dozens of vendors from all over Arizona at this event. So put March 26th down on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item six, Mr. Davidson, manage this report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just two quick things. We recently have locked in on two key dates, and it's a few months out, but just wanted to give you all a heads up, and then those that are here tonight and watching online. Prescott Valley Days has been, we've identified the weekend for that. It's going to be May 5th through the 8th. There were some scheduling issues with some of the vendors and the carnival contractor. And then that will prompt us to have our Community Cleanup Day, which is an annual event, on May 14th. We'll begin advertising and soliciting for that in the next month or two. This is a chamber and county combined partnership, but it's an opportunity for people throughout the community to be able to haul off stuff that's been acquired over the year for free, and hopefully clean up our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, here's your opportunity to remove an item. If not, I'd like to...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as written by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Let's pass the 10 and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item eight, A, Final Development Plan, FDP 17-001, point-of-view patio homes, consideration and possible action. Point of View Patio Homes, Consideration and Possible Action. Mr. Gonzalez, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is a request by Viewpoint Eighty-nine LLC for a Final Development Plan, FDP seventeen oh one, for the Point of View Patio Homes comprised of thirty-two detached single-family dwelling units on approximately six acres, located on the east side of Viewpoint Drive, adjacent to the south border of Viewpoint Subdivision. Prior actions to this have led to the current proposal beginning seventeen years ago in two thousand and four. However, due to concerns expressed by the citizens and the commission members regarding density and building heights, the application was deferred. Ultimately, a revised general plan amendment was approved in two thousand and six. A revised zoning map change was also approved on March twelfth, two thousand and seven. Council approved zoning map change ZC oh four dash zero zero eight at its April twenty-six oh seven meeting by Ordinance Number six eighty-three. The conditions in Ordinance six eighty-three included a requirement for the developer to participate in future costs of completing and extending Antelope Meadows Drive to State Route eighty-nine A and building the regional wastewater improvements. Final Development Plan seventeen oh one includes the conditions and contributions to be made to the town prior cost to building Antelope Meadows driveway/rightway connection at a tune of thirteen thousand ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents, and the North Side Sewer Project at forty-four thousand five hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cent at the time that building permits are issued. A subdivision agreement will also require financial assurances be submitted to ensure completion of all required public infrastructures for this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I apologize. Staff recommends authorization of signature Resolution Number twenty twenty-two, twenty-two thirty-two, approving Final Development Plan, FDP seventeen oh one. Be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Question, sir. Is this Mandalay that's doing this, then?
This is actually Mandalay, yes. It is Mandalay. That's right next door.
Yeah, that's right. Because originally, they were looking at apartment houses there, and so they've changed that now, correct?
That's correct. They were actually looking at doing that. They changed that. They were going back and trying to join that to their existing project. And when it went to the commission, there were some changes that they didn't like. So the developer went back and said, "We're just going to scrap that and go with what was approved originally."
And which is one, I think there's just one ingress, yeah, correct?
There would have been at that, at this point, there's two, actually.
Okay.
And we have an illustration of both those there.
That's where that tan, there was a tan ranch-style house there at one time that they've purchased and knocked it down.
Correct. That was the John property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, how, so I'm a little bit confused about the extension of Antelope Meadows Road because it doesn't, it doesn't touch this property, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
But it was part of the condition.
It's just part of the agreement.
Correct.
Just extending that. And then what makes these patio homes as opposed to just homes?
Just the style. The style that they're being built. They're actually a little more open.
Okay. So they're, because I mean, this thirty-six homes on six acres is, I mean, that's pretty standard for what we're seeing.
Correct.
Right. So it's not, it's not necessarily that they're going to be like smaller houses or smaller property to where they'd have a smaller purchase point.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the style of the home, and that's what they're calling them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. On the ingress egress, is that this, are they both coming out onto the same road on viewpoint?
Yes, they are at two different points.
Okay. I do see them. I just wanted to make sure they were there. Thank you.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number twenty twenty-two to twenty-two thirty-two, adopting Final Development Plan, FDP seventeen dash zero zero one, for Point of View Patio Homes by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item eight B, Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-one dash zero one three, Mingus West Unit Five. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This request is by Ash Dorn LLC for a Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-one dash thirteen, for Mingus West Unit Five comprised of fifty lots on approximately thirty-two acres, located north of intersection State Route eighty-nine A on Old Fine Road. Preliminary Development Plan, FDP twenty-one oh three, for Mingus West Phase Two, comprised of, comprises of two hundred and forty-three lots on a hundred and fifty-one acres. That was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Town Council entered into a development agreement through Resolution seven fifty-seven and June the twelfth, nineteen ninety-seven, to develop Mingus West on the two hundred and ninety-seven acres by Resolution Number four twelve. The council approved Resolution and, on the two hundred and ninety-seven acres for the rezoning to R one L eighteen. Preliminary Development Plan was approved for four hundred and sixty-eight lots on the two hundred and ninety-seven acres on a previously meeting with the town commission on April eleventh, nineteen ninety-seven. A final development plan for units one through four have been approved. On July thirteenth, two thousand and six, the council approved a rolling assessment of benefits and obligations under development agreement on a phase-by-phase basis and acknowledgement between the Town Mingus Land Corps LLC and Mingus West Phases Three through Eight LLC by Resolution fourteen forty-eight. Ash Dorn LLC is, is now purchasing the remaining undeveloped area to the east and is proposing to begin developing Unit Five. The subdivision agreement will require final assurances to ensure completion of all needed public infrastructure. Staff is recommending authorization of signature and Resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-two twenty-eight, approving Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-one thirteen. Be happy to answer any questions you have as well. A representative is here, and he may be able to answer questions that were posted previously.
Great. Yeah, I believe we can just probably start off with our citizens' questions that she had. We can have that addressed. I don't know if it'll be you, Mr. Gonzalez, or if the applicant can answer.
It'll, it'll actually be the applicant. I do have illustrations that he will be using.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name's Dwayne Hunn with Dorn Homes. We say Ash Dorn, but we do business as Dorn Homes in the community, as you know. One of the questions that was asked was related to traffic impact analysis and improvements to eighty-nine A. We have, we actually had both of those approved in the fall, in November, by ADOT, and had gone through your staff also for review. And I brought with me, there's an exhibit that shows the improvements we'll be doing to eighty-nine A. We're actually adding eight-foot shoulders all along our frontage, which is a half-mile long. And then we're doing eight-foot shoulders on the opposite side from our entrance to the west. And it has to do with classification of roads with increased traffic and all. That'll add safety to the, to the road. And then we are putting in a left turn lane, a eastbound left turn lane into the project at our new, new entrance. We're going to develop and market the project as Morning Star. That's what you'll see on the sign when you come out. But because it was originally approved as Mingus West future units, that's why we're following that on the plat.
So the turn lane, sir, will be similar to what is currently leading into Mingus West?
Exactly the same. Yep. And I mean, you know, the exhibit shows all the striping and signs and things that are being done. So I may be happy to answer any specific questions, but we did get that approved.
Great.
As one of those conditions that was properly pointed out. The other condition that was raised was, had to do with the oversizing of the water line that runs through this property that doesn't serve this property, but serves the original Mingus West all the way down to the racetrack. And we have an agreement, in fact, I just emailed it back to your staff with one very minor word change, and I think that's going to come through for your approval with the Unit Six plat. Because we won't be, this line's not affected by Unit Five. It falls in an area north of where we'll be developing this one. So we should, hopefully, we'll be back in the next, next council hearing with Unit Six for approval with that agreement. So we do have that agreement in place.
Will you be able to provide your contact information for our resident out there?
Most definitely.
Ma'am, would that work for you? Be able to go direct with him?
Happy to discuss it. I, for what it's worth, I attended the Homeowners Association for Board Meeting. I think they have a quarterly last Thursday, and took a lot of questions. Everybody seemed very satisfied. We certainly, the layout could go back up for the subdivision if it's available. There's some of the homes that we're going to be building right against where we'll need to install retaining walls. And so we want to work with each of the landowners to, you know, work through what the disturbance will be, how we'll bring their property back to condition and all. So we want to get ahead of that, make sure they know that, you know, we're, we understand this is their neighborhood, and we're here to, to add to it and improve it, not to take away from it.
Council?
I had a quick question between Lot One and Two. You have one that says "not a part." So what is that lot designated for?
Yes, excuse me, Councilwoman.
Sorry about that.
That, um, yeah, my allergies are messing with me. That is actually owned by the Town of Prescott Valley. There's a well site there.
Okay, thank you.
This is the way it played out over in the past.
Just poor, Lot One just looks so like left out, you know? Okay, thank you.
It does. We will improve the road in front of that and put a, you know, improve the wall around the town well site and put a driveway into it. All the things that would need to be done so that it looks, it has a finished look to it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, Pepple?
This is going to sound like a silly question, but the new proposed entrance is the first thing that you're going to do, right?
Yes, it's part of Unit Five, it's part of the first phase.
So there won't be any construction traffic on the existing entrance?
That was a question raised at the HOA, and I, and it was, was a very valid one. In fact, we will have a temporary construction entrance while we're building the subdivision with the, with the normal rock for tracking out and not raise dust. And we will not allow any of our contractors to go through the existing development. And then, you know, once we have the roads in place, then our vertical contractors building homes will be able to come through the, what will be Mockingbird Lane is the main entrance.
And then this is another one that you probably heard at the HOA meeting as well. But so right now, the, the drainage of existing Mingus West is fantastic. Everything drains east to west. There's big drainage ditches, and then retention basins before it goes out into the open field. Is that all engineered to be able to handle the increased runoff that we'll get once the, the new neighborhood is in?
Most definitely. Your, your code requires us to provide detention, stormwater detention, so that the water that leaves our site is no higher flow rate than what is going through there in the existing conditions. And we have significant detention basins that we're building primarily in Unit Six, but there is, there's some in Unit Five that, for a smaller wash, it does go into the original.
Okay, so you have, so there's actually going to be detention basin before any of that water goes into the existing.
Correct.
Oh, perfect.
When I come back with Unit Six in a month or two weeks, I'll, we'll be able to show you that. There's a pretty significant, not only detention basin, but we're also building a large park area with dog parks and a Ramada and playground equipment. And it should be a nice amenity for the, for the development.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor?
That's going to be maintained by the HOA?
Yes.
Okay, good. And so you only have one entrance at this point because it's going to connect with Mingus West? And that'll be the second, once you're built?
There's actually three, if not four, road connections between our ultimate buildout and the original Mingus West. I think it is four. So there'll be a lot of cross-traffic, you know? Provide extra safety and access for members of, who live right on the edge of the existing.
Any other questions?
There is one other lot that says also not a part further down the road. And what is that one designated for?
The larger, the larger ones right around, there's two parcels that we, the seller that, who's selling us the land, does, does not own. They were reserved by previous landowners involved in the original development. They thought they'd be locations for commercial development. We don't see it. We tried to buy those and include lots there, but they wanted too much money. They, they feel like they're commercial in the future. I mean, it won't be in my lifetime, but I think there may be a time when those could be commercial.
Okay.
But yeah, that's what those are for. We tried, been trying to work with, with the owners of those.
Gotcha.
Just remind them, Joe Contino had commercial properties in Granville that he tried to sell for eighteen years, and he finally had to convert them to residential. So you're probably right.
Can I have a motion, please?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number twenty twenty-two through twenty-two twenty-eight, adopting Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-one dash zero one three, for Mingus West Unit Five by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gonzalez, you're up for item eight C, Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-two dash zero zero one, Human Bean Coffee Shop.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This request is by Bean Stream LLC owner for a Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-two dash zero zero one for a six-hundred-square-foot manufactured buil- building to be placed on point thirty-one acres for the Human Bean Drive-Thru Coffee Shop located between Frontage Road and Valley Road, west of Robert Road. The property is located, located in a PAD, planned area development, previously adopted by Ordinance Number four eighty-three for the Old Town. Ordinance four eighty-three rezoned Old Town area to C two PAD, commercial, general, sales, and service. The site was previously developed as a gas station and a convenience store. In addition to landscaping, sidewalks will be installed along Robert Road and Frontage Road where they currently do not exist. This project will meet all site development standards. Staff at this time would recommend authorizing signature Resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-two thirty-three approved, approving Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-two dash zero zero two. Be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Vice Mayor?
I, well, I think the site looks great. I think the landscaping looks great. That's kind of what we're looking for. It's over and above, and I think the elevations look great. And if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion.
I actually have a quick question.
Councilman?
The, doing it as a pre-manufactured building, is that standard for Human Bean? Is that their business practice?
It is for theirs.
So all the ones we've seen down in Phoenix, it's all the same?
Correct. They don't, the exterior doesn't look like it because they changed the facade, but yes. That's their standard.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number two oh two-two dash two-two-three-three, adopting Final Development Plan, FDP twenty-two dash zero zero one by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item eight D, Mountain Valley Park Skate Park Camera System. Ms. Van Herren, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, as always, it is a pleasure to be here. I have recently become an expert at cameras besides restrooms and splash pads. So I just want to let all of you know that the fiscal year for the twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two year, you had requested my department to prioritize cameras at the skate park at Mountain Valley. And I'm very happy to say, not only do we plan on putting cameras at the skate park, but the parking lot, the pavilion right across from the restroom where we've had horrendous damage and vandalism to that restroom. Also, we are going to put them at the new prefab restroom, the concession stands, the four-plex softball fields, and the pool, which the pool has never had cameras. So this is a huge, huge deal. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of these cameras so we can move forward with a safe park. Any questions?
Vice Mayor?
Timing. Do you know the timing on that danner?
So who will be, I mean, they'll be on some sort of recording device for twenty-four, forty-eight hours, something like that?
Yeah, we'll have them for thirty, we're having thirty days of feed through a cloud-based system.
Gotcha.
So, again, when you're saying cloud-based, you got to explain it to the old guy here, okay? So is, so obviously, I could, maybe going in the library, you're going to have the recorders, but they're just going up to the cloud?
Yes, they're going up to the cloud. The library has the same thing. It just goes zip, zip.
Okay. Sounds good.
Casey, I think this is magnificent. We've been wanting this for a long time. It helps, you know, it helps other moms bring their kids here or let their kids come to the skate park. So this is, helps our protective factors. It's fabulous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just confirming, they're just video, there's no And just confirming, they're just video, there's no audio?
No, right.
Just video.
So this will be by summer for sure?
Yes.
By time school's up?
Yes.
Okay.
We're hoping so.
We're hoping.
We're also going to make sure it's appropriately signed.
Yes.
So that's the key part to the deterrent, is making sure that everyone coming into this park facility with bad intent is going to be noticed that there's, they're on camera.
It's a, it's a great.
When you said by summer, I looked over at Casey, and all he had was a smile. So you're assuming something that may or may not happen.
I'm optimistic.
Okay.
I have just one comment.
Counselwoman?
Just with the vandalism that we've had over there, I really feel that the cost is well worth it to have this, these cameras. Thank you for all your work.
Are we taking any measures to avoid the cameras themselves being vandalized?
Yes. So we're, we're putting them high, and yeah, our Parks crew is going to install all of them, and we'll make sure that they are not accessible. Casey behind you is raising his hand.
Yeah, no?
Who damaged the, the cameras? So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with gridless power to provide security cameras and other required signal, signal infrastructure at Mountain Valley Park in the amount of $45,038.89 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimous, Lee Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Herren. Moving on, item 8E, New Series 6 Liquor License, Hideout Bar. Clerk, will you be taking this? This will be an open, or this will be a public hearing at this point?
This application is for a transfer of ownership of a Series 6 liquor license. What was previously Bottoms Up is now Hideout Bar located at 8624 East Valley Road. The notice of public hearing was posted at the location, and our office did not receive any pro or con statements regarding this license. So council now, after the public hearing, will have the option to recommend approval or denial of this license to the Department of Liquor Board.
Is anyone here? This is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak out in regards to this, here's your opportunity. Doesn't look like there's any comments. I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item 8F, which is New Series 06 Liquor License, Hideout Bar. Is there any additional questions for the clerk? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of a Series 06 liquor license for Hideout Bar by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimous, Lee Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Now moving on to item nine.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to a jury.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Roger's cue.
And the pass is unanimous, Lee.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. You have a great night.